It's after 6:30 tonight. This is our regular called meeting. It's Monday, May the 14th. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I'm sure everybody's looking forward to spending Valentine's Day at City Hall. We have a really important set of agenda items tonight. We're going to be taking some of them out of order that might make a little bit more sense, but everything will be covered. There'll be plenty of discussion, especially as we come out of the closed meeting. So certainly advise all of you or invite all of you to stick around after closed meeting and hopefully there'll be some action to be taken outside of that as well. So with that, first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comments. Understand, Ms. Shadoen, you are signed up. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Agenda items, you just had served.
Yeah. One thing that was not on the agenda is, let me ask you something, Jimmy. If you were wanting to schedule a town hall meeting, when would be the best time and day of the week to have the fewest people show up?
Probably Sunday morning.
Sunday morning?
That's what I would guess, because I'm not going to come up anywhere.
You wouldn't think a Tuesday, 10 o'clock in the morning? Something like that? Maybe? So I was very disappointed to see the MEDC's first meeting in three months scheduled for a Thursday at noon. I mean, seriously, Thursday at noon? That's one way to make sure the working public doesn't show up. Okay, that's all on that. On items number seven, I thought the CO was pretty cut and clear. Now, there's an addition saying "other provisions" tacked on at the end of that item. Very curious about what those "other provisions" would be. They haven't been discussed, haven't seen any discussion on those. But now we're looking at "other provisions." I'd like some clarity on what those other positions provisions are. Number 12 on the agenda, I would like a copy of that. It can either be emailed or put on the website, either one. But I would like a copy. I think my email is pretty much, I think Angie has my email. What you got?
Copy.
What is it?
It's a copy of what you want. You can have mine.
I can have yours?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Kevin. How are you doing?
I'm great.
That's good.
Okay. And number nine, what was the number nine again? My notes aren't very clear.
That's the abandoning of a portion of a alley?
Yeah, yeah. I was just curious, since that's almost in my backyard, how that's going to work, because that creek is now running where that alley used to be. And I'm just kind of curious how that's going to work, because the alley does not run straight through anymore. And it also has utilities, a manhole, and other items as well in that area. And kind of curious how it's going to work and whether how that is being surveyed. And that's all I have for this evening.
We ought to get some comment on that this evening as well. Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Shadoen, thank you for the comments. As I said, we're going to take some of these items out of order, so please bear with us this evening. We're going to get right to item seven, which is under the supplemental agenda. The notice relating to this has been posted prior to, for, what, Angie, 30 days or bench?
Yes, the original agenda.
Yeah. So item seven is the discussion of possible action regarding approval of ordinance O-2-2022 and ordinance authorizing the issuance of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. So with that, everybody has the ordinance in your packet. It's the one with several pages. Match that up with ordinance O-2022. Tell you what, I know we have a couple of our advisors here with us this evening, staff, professionals, anybody want to make any comments? And certainly I'll do the same.
We have Jim Sabonis here and Jeff Golbus. Jim is the architect, one of the COs, and Jeff is your legal counsel for the process.
I've got a presentation loaded up. I believe you can turn to Mayor Iger. This is City McGregor, Texas, certificate of obligation series 2022. Good evening. Well, it's being loaded up. My name is Jim Sabonis. I'm managing director of Hilltop Securities. I work with Boyd London, your financial advisor, and I've assisted him with the execution of this transaction. Jeff Golbus with McCall Parker, your bond counsel's here. I'll focus on the financial aspects of it. Any legal questions, I'll defer to him on this. And most of all, happy Valentine's Day. As I was telling Kevin, it's an important meeting for me, because tonight's my anniversary and it's Valentine's Day, so quite the day. The sale went better than my evening's going to go, I think, but we'll deal with that later. Congratulations. What I want to say is that we bid this out through a private placement process. And as we are going forward, I was concerned. We've heard inflationary items come forward. We had an initial rate of 3.25% indicated. And I'm pleased to tell you that this transaction far exceeded our goals. And you're going to see if the results are much more financially beneficial. To review, we're funding exactly what we proposed to begin with, that's indicated in the TIRS plan and has been done in the notice. Water and sewer utilities, rail extension, road improvements, capitalized interest until our TIRS revenues materialize, and then the cost of issuance. From day one, we've had a project fund of $15,717,000. That's the project fund that we're funding today. Repayment will be a pledge of adware taxes, but from a credit perspective, our repayment source that's going to be budgeted is the tax increment revenues that will be generated specifically in the tax increment in our TIRS number one. We have 10-year amortization, and these bonds are going to be called at any time after our capitalized interest period's over, with the expectation that we'll move forward a few years. And as we move forward, we'll know where our stabilized revenues are in the TIRS, and we will call them and reamortize them, whether it takes 10 more years or 12 more years. We originally talked about a 30-year initial amortization, but the good thing about a 10-year, you're going to see it gives us a very low initial interest rate. So it's structured exactly as we talked about. Again, no adware tax rate impact. We received five bids. The low bid was 2.11% by American National Bank. Again, prepayable at par on 1124, at the time our capitalized interest runs out or any time thereafter. These are the five bids we received, and these are typical bidders we see. I have to congratulate your staff. This is a very complex transaction on a very significant economic development project. Carolyn and Kevin responded to numerous investors' inquiries about data, you know, what's the information behind the facts, the size of data. They did an excellent job. And uniquely, American National Bank, who had the most questions, we spent the most time with, was our low bidder. You can see even within the bidders who committed us, there's a big disparity in bid, 2.11%, 3.26%. And again, the informed bidder was the low bidder. Here's what we're going to fund. This is the breakdown of what our financing is. It's about $250,000 less than we did in the TIRS plan. And the reason is that we had conservatively budgeted financing costs, and our capitalized interest is lower because our interest rates lower during our capitalized interest fund. So we're about 200, exactly $240,000 less than our financial modeling initially indicated. But the real important thing to indicate is that when you look at the total debt services proposal, it's at $20,157,000. It's actually $2 million, approximately $20,000 less than what our plan of finance estimate it was, based on reduction on interest rates and the lower power amount that we have. We did our initial notice on December 13th. We moved forward through all appropriate legal actions and notices. Tonight, you have ordinance that's been reviewed and approved by, and drafted by your bond counsel, reviewed by the purchaser, and offered a purchase at 2.11%. In summary, I'm excited to present this. You know, over the last few weeks, we've had the talk about inflation. We've seen interest rates rise. But yet, at the same time, what I've noticed is nationwide investors look to Texas credits. We structurally have a very sound way we issue bonds. We have Attorney General of Texas review and approve our issuance. And as interest rates rise, people want to reduce credit risk. You know, your high AA rating allows us to get a very low rate. And so, in summary, this achieves every goal that we talked about, but exceeds by reducing the expenses and costs, because we have a much more effective bid than we presented originally. So, as financial advisor, I recommend approval on those facts. Answer any questions, provide additional data I can, and turn it over to our bond counsel, Mr. Golbus, if you have any legal questions.
Mr. Sabonis, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. We may have some questions after. Mr. Golbus, provide us, yes sir, anything, any other additional information?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jeff Golbus with McCall Parker. So I wanted to briefly go through some of the provisions of the ordinance. As Jim said, this is a great, real good transaction. The ordinance before you is very lengthy. It's got a lot of legalese, which the lawyers can appreciate. Let me just emphasize, the certificates are legally secured by adware taxes and a limited pledge of your revenues, but importantly, it also states in the pledge language that to the extent other lawfully available funds are scheduled to be on deposit in your interest and sinking fund in any year, there's no requirement to levy taxes or other revenues. That's to pull in this TIRS concept. Also, some of the other provisions explain, we can defees these and redeem them in any manner permitted by law. That's, again, very standard language. The city's got maximum flexibility to refund these, including using any securities that are available to accomplish that refunding. Because this is a private placement, it contains provisions for the bank to actually take possession of a physical certificate, which the mayor and city secretary will sign tonight. This does not go to New York in what's called a book entry only certificate, so they will have physical possession. It contains provisions to replace that in case it's damaged or lost. It also contains a number of provisions to issue these COs as tax exempt. I got involved in this project, I think, back about August, and one of the immediate things we started discussing with Kevin was the project, the scope of the project to ensure that these COs could be issued as tax exempt. The bank doesn't pay any income tax on the interest they earn. That brings your borrowing cost down. So we do have provisions that I have already vetted with the city to ensure that this can be issued as a tax exempt CO. Also establishes the construction fund, which is the fund where funds will be sent when we close on this, that the city will use to pay the project costs. Also contains methods to amend this ordinance if we ever needed to. It's exceedingly rare. It also specifies, because this is not a publicly offered transaction, it really reduces the information that y'all have to provide to the Securities Exchange Commission on an annual basis. So that, again, is a positive for the city. That's a summary of all the provisions of the ordinance. With your approval tonight, I'll file this transaction with the Texas Attorney General's Office tomorrow. We will close on the 15th, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
So close on the 15th, and then assuming the development agreement, all those other things associated with it get approved, then when could those bonds actually be pulled on to begin construction, paying for things as needed?
March 15th.
Oh, really? Okay.
And Mayor, let me interject. On March 15th, the project fund, the capitalized interest cost issues will be deposited in the city's bank accounts. So you'll have the funds from March 15th. And then it'll be up to the city's administrative and legal review to release those funds appropriately. In Texas, the way we sell bonds is, we sell bonds, we close, we receive funds fully at that time. And let me also say in summary, well, there is language in other, it deals with very common and standard details, as mentioned more eloquently by Jeff, approval by the Attorney General, setting up bank accounts and things of nature. Nothing that changes or modifies the original intent, which is funded utilities and public infrastructure in the tourism. Also, from my perspective and working with Boyd, we've discussed this in brief detail, I congratulate the city on a brilliant and visionary concept and ability to successfully compete against major metroplexes all across the country for a successful business. And most importantly, it's reflected in this very low interest rate you receive. You know, that reflects good management and the good credit of the city.
Okay, so again, this is just one piece of tonight. We'll come back, circle back after the executive session and deal with the development agreement. It all kind of comes together here. But as to the ordinance, council, do you have any questions of either Jeff or Jim under item seven? So just a kind of a practical question. Do we open a separate account for the money to come into? So we have a separate, okay, it's not into a bond account that we already may have. This is a separate.
It'll be a separate one. That way you can track proceedings.
Can be separately tracked, separately audited.
It will be part of your, when you go through your audit process, don't look at that one, but it's important that you have records and true, that everything can be traced to that one.
Congratulations. And Mayor, between now and the closing, we'll work with Carolyn, Kevin, to make sure the appropriate accounts are set up to manage both the closing and further administration. Maybe input from the city's accounting, independent accountant to advise their process and what was talked about, investment proceeds to maximize the interest earnings. But it'll be, the requirement is that it is detailed and separate, fully tracked, fully separated, segmented from that process.
Good, good. Counsel, what other questions do you have? Okay, again, this is a big moment, big event. There are other things that tie into it that are going to be just as important on tonight's agenda. But somebody want to step up and make a motion under item seven by ordinance number?
I'll move that we approve ordinance O-2-2022.
Second. There's a motion to second under item seven, which is to approve ordinance O-2-2022. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Congratulations, council, city staff, everybody. Great work.
Thank you, Mr. Sabonis.
Absolutely. Jim, Jeff, you guys did tremendous work throughout this. Greatly appreciated. Again, that's only a piece of it. We'll come out of executive session, dealing with the development agreement. Hopefully, we can, assuming, depending on conversations, we'll then share some of the terms of the development agreement, I think, that are critical also for the public to understand. Minutes. Yes, we'll pick that up. So let's go back and, under the consent agenda, item 1A. Thanks, Kevin. So that's the consider approving minutes of regular council meetings held on January the 10th, 2022.
On the supplemental agenda, there is also a set of minutes, January the 18th.
Item 11. Let's see. So that's related, then. Consider approving minutes of special call council meeting held on January the 18th, 2022. So those minutes, yes, it's all here, the February, or excuse me, the January the 18th and the January 10th minutes. Everybody have those tracked? Two of them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, those minutes will, previous thing in your packet. Hope everyone's had a chance to take a look at them. Is there a motion to approve two sets of minutes being January the 10th, January the 18th, 2022?
I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes of January 10th and January 18th.
Second. There's a motion to second to approve the minutes. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Let's see if there's anything else we want to take before we go to the executive session. Tell you what, since items eight and nine do not relate to the approval of the bonds, let's jump right into executive session so we can come out and hopefully share some more details about the bonds and the development agreement. So with that, it's 7:03. We're going to go straight to item two, which is the closed meeting pursuant to chapter 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551071 legal, section 072 real estate, section 074 personnel, and section 551087 economic development. Specifically, we'll be talking under item A, which is legal under Texas Government Code, section 551071 and Rule 105, professional rules of conduct. Discussion with attorney on confidential matters under item B. Discussion with attorney on confidential matters under item B. Discussion regarding sale of real property, that's under section 551072. Has nothing to do with personnel. And then to item D, it does relate to economic development under 551087, which is discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay, or expand in or near the city of McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations and/or deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So with that, it's 7:04. We will temporarily adjourn into executive session. I invite everybody to stick around, and we'll be out just as quick as we can get this business taken care of.
Good to go.
Okay, we are out of executive session, so that takes us to item number three. And that is discussion and possible action regarding approval of a development agreement, including tax abatement agreement, personal property, conveyance of real property in agreements under chapter 3A Local Government Code with Canoff Insulation, Inc. There are several provisions here. Name of property owner, Canoff Insulation, Inc. Name of applicant for tax abatement agreement, Canoff Insulation, Inc. A reinvestment zone, the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City McGregor, Texas, which includes McGregor Industrial Park. Improvements included in agreement, manufacturing equipment and other business personal property to be located at or within a manufacturing facility of approximately 600,000 square feet to be placed on a tract of property of approximately 170 acres located in the McGregor Industrial Park. Capital investments, that'd be personal property having an estimated cost of at least 119 million along with real property improvements of at least 75,600,000. And job creation, this project is expected to create 150 jobs at an average salary of $50,000 per year. So, we'll spend a little time going through the development agreement. That's one of the things we just cleared up in executive session and really what we've been at as a city for a long time now. Four, five months, if not longer, once we saw the project hopefully coming together, we were trying to arrange financing and the terms of the development agreement so it could all come together at one time. That's essentially what tonight is about. So with the financing in place, now we have the development agreement, which really ties everything together. So we'll spend a little time going through some of the more important provisions here. On page two, under development agreement, there's a section regarding real estate. There's a purchase price for the property of 1.7 million that will be granted to Canoff as part of a development incentive in exchange for several other things that they'll be obligated to do. And we have the conveyance by March 1st, 2022. Kevin, we still think that's possible or not? That conveyance?
Yes.
Okay.
Charlie's kind of got some people on point to get that down.
Okay. Some of the more important provisions, page four, under tax abatements, that's section B. So you look there, that has to do with the personal property abatement. So there's a 10-year tax abatement. It's 75 years, excuse me, 75% for the first five years, 50% for years six through 10, so 10 years total. And that is on the personal property. And remember, the personal property is approximately 119 million dollars. So that abated portion, that that is not abated, returns to the city and that would also go towards paying down the debt. Is that correct?
Correct.
So in years one through five, that 25% goes towards paying down the debt. Year six through 10, 50% goes to paying down the debt and then the expiration.
Wait, wait, on the personal property, no?
Yeah, yeah, so.
The debt is all going to be paid by the real property.
Okay, okay.
Personal property, you actually put that in your general fund. That'll fund police fire?
Yeah, and we'll probably have to pay for some other things out there, maybe.
It'll be in the general fund at your discretion.
Okay. Okay, good. Then we've got infrastructure improvements in page five. Those are the things that really that form the basis of the need for the debt. And that is Judith Road improvements. So Judith Road will be opened up from, what is it, Bluebonnet Parkway all the way over to Motherneff Parkway.
Yes, sir.
That'll become the primary road for Canoff as we limit access to some of our city roads, which would be what, Johnson Drive? What other forms of access would we be trying to limit there?
Bluebonnet, well, once Judith Road is open, Bluebonnet will be off-limits to trucks unless they're serving the school. Judith Road, the intersection at Bluebonnet and Johnson Drive will tee in directly as a four-way intersection instead of that little Y offset that's there now. So it'll be a straight through.
So the idea was to keep those trucks away from the school there. Water system improvements, connected solely to the Canoff facility.
Well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be run down Judith and it will serve other people between where TransTech is now, down to them, but then eventually be extended further south to where Canoff is there. And it'll serve both sides, but it'll be a 16-inch range.
So we'll put it in there, it'll serve Canoff, be available for others that may develop alongside it.
Correct.
Same with the water system, wastewater system improvements. And then the big piece under item, or page six, paragraph four, is the industrial rail spur. I think that's what we all sweated over for so long and is the bulk of the debt.
It'll get the rail back into the park.
Yes.
It will be extendable into the rest of the park. We're working on some preliminary drawings down. A lot of that will be dictated by the type of development that comes in on the Bankers side side. But they're working a couple of options now so that we'll know what those are, what those
I've had a lot of people ask about, so is the rail coming across 317? Yes, it will come across 317 with future plans to, I guess, the traffic would go above the rail. Rail stays at grade.
Correct.
And traffic would go over top. That would be the...
Like what they have at Valley Mills?
Yeah.
It'll have a grade separation with the text op. It's in text op's plans now. It's not a funded project yet, but as soon as it gets funded, they'll go over. It will be built as an at-grade process, but it will be synchronized.
Under paragraph D, page six, Canoff has an option to purchase additional property. There are some protections protections in there for us, so that they can't become land speculators, buy the land and turn around and flip it for something that we didn't approve. It has to be directly connected to their operations. Paragraph, excuse me, page eight, paragraph Roman numeral two, some really important provisions here. These are the economic development obligations of Canoff. So the real property improvements, when you look at paragraphs A and B, those are timing provisions of when those real property improvements must be put in, but essentially by January of 2024, that real property value of the improvements they will have put in must be And that, at least for the city's portion primarily, well, it does, it funds all of this debt we've been talking about. So it's the city's 90% of that, MCC has agreed to put in their 90%, McClintock County has agreed to put in 90%, and so with that, that's really all we've been talking about with this debt servicing over the past several months that everybody's been seeing. That's how the debt is paid. That is, and under paragraph C, it says, "Canoff shall maintain," so they must maintain at least that valuation of 75 million. That's what we've built the entire amortization on. And if they don't, let's say, for example, everybody's concerned about, you know, for years talking about the Riesel situation, the power plant comes in, it's built on, everybody's financial models and plans are built on, well, it's going to be worth so much, but then it goes on the tax rolls, and after protests and property value decrease, it's not near what everybody anticipated. Well, we have that covered here, because even if the property valuation does not reach the 75 million goal, they still must make up the difference. That is a guarantee from Canoff, that's part of this agreement. So whether it actually rolls in at 75 million, whether it does not, we would still get the same amount of money generated as if it were 75 million. Paragraphs D, that has to do with the real property at 119 million, that's their guarantee. Again, we know that'll be abated in some fashion for 10 years. Paragraph E, again, says they shall maintain personal property valuations at that. Paragraph F has to do with employment.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
So the real property, there isn't abatement on the real property?
No, nothing on the real property, only on the personal property.
Okay, alright.
Yep. The real property, our 90% of it, though, is what goes into the TERS to pay the debt. And the personal property is under partial abatements. So F is the guarantee of jobs and wages, 150 full-time jobs at an average salary of $50,000 a year. As you turn the page, on page 10, we're going to be applying for an EDA grant, that's through the federal government. Kevin, what is our application? It's the U.S. Economic Development Administration grant. I think we're applying for, what, a half a million is what we're eligible for, possibly?
Yes, sir. The, we've actually already applied for one kind of an amalgamated regional grant. We failed there. The, that was led by the Council of Governments, but we will be seeking an individual EDA grant as well for the same project for half a million. No guarantees, but so far it's being received well, and we visited with them about it.
So that really comes through our connection, I guess locally, that's through Pete Sessions' office, is that right?
Correct, and we'll use it to pay the debt down, obviously. So the reason it's in here is it assures them that if we get it, it helps take a little bit of pressure off of them.
We get into paragraphs on page 10, that has to do with Canoff's breaches of the agreement. For example, if they don't maintain property taxes of real or personal, they don't maintain the jobs. Then we have what are generally known as various clawback provisions, so that they meet those obligations, or else we begin to get things back, which could eventually even be the property. No one anticipates that occurring, but it's here. And that continues through page 11, under material breaches. And specifically, you will see in paragraphs B1 and B2 on page 11, those are the property valuation guarantees. Paragraph one is the real property guarantee, paragraph two is the personal property valuation guarantee. And paragraph three on page 12 is their breach of employment obligation. So everything is guaranteed. It's not maybe, or we'll try, or best efforts, it's a, it's shall. The rest of it is general lawyer language. Those are the provisions that we have been haggling over, along with how do we pay for this in such a form and fashion that it does not incur any property tax liability to our everyday homeowners, which include us, nor does it include any direct increases to water or wastewater, which obviously includes us. So if those things are adjusted in any way, it is not related to Canoff, it's related to everyday events that would already be going on here in our city. So that's what's before us tonight, and it's pretty much good to go. Again, Charlie Olson, our city attorney, has been wrestling with this for quite some time, with the lawyers for Canoff. And Kevin, is there anything holding us back from approving it, or anything we need to add to it?
No, sir. As I told y'all at the very beginning, this very complicated project has all the moving pieces for economic development there. I don't think we left anything out, did we, Andrew? Charlie has done an exceptional job at booking that in here, dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, taking care of every possible conceivable, and even some not conceivable problems that might occur. The TERS, the stuff that Jeff and his folks have put into place on the TERS, and the financing is very flexible, so if somehow performance wanes here, we can adjust the payments on the, on the COs. Between Jeff, Charlie Olson, and Jim Sabonis in Boyd London, it's a heck of a package. And it's going to do a really great job for you. And the thing is, is as we've always known, it's an anchor type thing, and it should bring more interest, and it already has briefed you on some of that this evening, that still cannot disclose, we're under non-disclosure agreement. You've already had Messer announced, they're kind of part of this crew. TransTech is going to be doing some fabricating, they're an existing industry, and they've already been contacted by Messer, another company that's talking to us, and Canoff about fabricating for their plants. From an economic development standpoint, it doesn't get any better than that. You've got big things coming to town, and they're going to use existing companies to help build them. So to me, this is the beginning of your magic moment. It's ready to go.
Kevin raised a good point. So kind of as an oversight of all of this is the TERS board. TERS Board, Council, that board was established by us a handful of months ago. It oversees the TERS geographical location, the properties that go into it, the payment of the debt. It'll have oversight with, it just provides an additional transparency and oversight into the, into the debt money and how it's spent, so...
And it's, and it's populated by not just city appointees, but also MCC appointees, the school district has an appointee, the county has a couple of appointees, even state legislators, if they want to show up, are on this board. A lot of transparency and a lot of purpose. Be a purpose-driven group for you for 40 years to come, as long as it thinks in existence. And you have one of the only large land masses that has the capability that this one has in the state of Texas. There's probably not six or seven out there. So I think you're also in the dead center of Texas, so I think it's going to be a pretty successful time period for your community.
Okay, before we make any sort of motions around the clock yet, Council, do you have any questions directly pertaining to this development agreement here, anything we need to hash out further? And again, it's just to make sure everybody is comfortable with what's in it. If you've got any questions, again, I know we've been through this and at this for a long time, but if you're not certain about something, please ask. Before I, excuse me, before I call for a vote, Kevin, you talked about all the things that have been accomplished. I'll say, though, between you and Andrew, y'all have done an amazing job over the past years at staying with this. We began this, what, in 2018?
Yes, sir.
So, excuse me, four years later, well, we've come a long way, and the two of you have spearheaded this from the very beginning, and it is complicated, it was always complicated. But y'all have done excellent work, and Kevin, I'll tell you, for your years here, this is your finest piece of work. And it's not just what you've helped us accomplish, but the way you have handled people throughout also. It's all about relationships and taking care of people, and you've done your best work here. I don't mind saying that, hands down. I've seen all your work up close for however long it's been now, and this is your best work. So you're to be commended on getting this to the finish line. And I say finish line, we're kind of halfway there, but tonight's a big deal. So congratulations to you and to Andrew as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, and the way Andrew does. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Waco Economic Development Team.
Yeah.
They are such strong partners on a regional basis, and they get the regional projects. And your city staff has been just stellar at every turn for everything we ever need, not only doing the day-to-day business, but dropping what they have to for economic development. That's the way you have to respond. You have to be able to deliver when you say you will. And I'll also say, this city council since day one has been very focused on the future of the community, period. And I've been doing this a long time in several towns, and I've never seen a city council that stays focused on the good of the community the way this one does. And I've just, that's been that way since the first day up till today. And I thank you all for your leadership.
Okay, is there a motion on item three, and you can just reference it by development agreement with Canoff? And that's really to approve it and authorize signature, I would say, by the mayor or city manager at the appropriate time, because we still have to wait to get final documents back and things like that.
It's going to be your signature, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the development agreement with Canoff, with the mayor's signature to finalize.
There's a motion of second under item three. Now, the questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Congratulations, Council, good work, good work. Thank you. And Jeff Gullis, thank you very much for helping us navigate these waters. I think you were new to us through this, but we sure hope to see you down the road, not only in this project, but with others, till you did us a fine job, sir. I really appreciate it.
Hats off to you guys, only a little, Kevin. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Having a pretty small role.
Yeah, well, you did, very important, very important. Okay, so we'll roll back through some of this supplemental agenda before we get down to the announcements. Takes us back to, looks like item eight, discussion, possible action regarding approval of the land exchange between the City McGregor, that's 21.3 acres located in the Jesse Russell Senior Survey, abstract 743, in the City McGregor, McClintock County, Texas. And TransTech Fabrication LLC, 20 acres located in the Jesse Russell Senior Survey, abstract 743, in the City of McGregor, McClintock County, Texas.
I think you have... The, yeah, I had a slide, and I don't think I forwarded it, my apologies. Really, it's almost a straight across land swap. The TransTech folks have a 20-acre piece, 21-point-something acre piece, that's immediately north of the railroad, that is immediately, railroad right away, that is immediately north of their facility. And they have a total of 100 acres, and they're going to swap us 20 acres off of the... They're going to swap us 20 acres off of the west side, which will actually line up real well what we're going to be needing to do with an entry road from that north end off of McGuffey. It's pretty well straight across. We've gone back and forth on this a couple of times, but this is it, it's ready to go. Charlie's worked really hard on this. And there's no money, there's no anything, it's just...
Just a land swap.
Yeah, just a land swap. We did pay for the survey for all of it, to make sure the survey was correct, and they have to get their title insurance, and we have to get ours. So you do this, and then we'll go to closing, do the deed and everything else later.
But explain the why, what's the significant advantage?
They, they want to have that rail through the middle of it, if it ever gets developed. But they have a, another company that they've bought that they want to bring here and expand over on that side and do some production over there. And they want it, decide, I'm not behind them.
And as for us, no difference?
No, we don't have any, we don't have anything else involved yet. I don't know that they'll come to us for anything if they...
No, but I mean, the land swap, does it affect us one way or another?
It helps, it helps us.
It's almost 20 acres to the left.
Yeah, it's...
Okay.
It puts it where it needs to be, it's a much better situation for us. We've actually talked to the folks that were before TransTech about doing something similar to this. When TransTech took it over and this guy took over as CEO, he saw the merit of it pretty quickly in his pursuit of sense.
Okay, this isn't the first time we've seen this either, but tonight's for approval. Is there a motion under item eight, and you can just reference it by approval of land change, or exchange between the city and TransTech?
I'm voting for approval of land exchange between the City McGregor and with Land Tech
There's a motion of second under item eight, as stated. Is, are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item nine, discussion, possible action regarding approval of ordinance O-3-22, in ordinance of the City McGregor abandoning a portion of the 15-by-160-foot unopened alley, separating Thompson lots B3 and B4, and Thompson lots 5 and 6, Block 2, City McGregor, and authorizing the city manager to execute the quitclaim deed to adjoining property owner McGregor ISD.
I think you have this in front of you. It's real simple, the ISD owns on all sides of it. They actually thought they owned it, and they're, they have an interest in getting rid of it. We have no utilities in there. The utilities, the sewer line that we should have discussed earlier, actually runs right down the creek, and...
So the creek would be on the, what, the right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
What we see here?
Correct. Right up against that right side. So this just lets the school amalgamate that. It's something we'll never open or never use. It's something we'll never open or never use. Toed with the idea going ahead and closing it on the north side of that, you can see there's a shed been built, partial into it. We'll just approach that later. I don't want to have to fool with that right now. We can actually do this beast without a survey because it's so well-defined. When we do that up there, it'll have to be surveyed, and they'll have to buy it. I didn't think you won't have to school to buy it.
Yeah. So that's just an alley through there?
Yes, sir. And there is no utilities out there.
Nothing there.
Nothing.
Okay.
A useless alley.
Yeah, I heard somebody's interested in buying or building houses there.
Yep, I think he's going to do that. They packaged this, but they did it separately when they did the old elementary school property, which is also going to become a little bit of a future project. Planning some of that.
Okay, is there a motion under item nine by ordinance number?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 0-3-22, as written.
There's a motion of second under item nine. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item 10 is discussion of possible action regarding approval of the order of general election for wards 2, 4, and mayor on May 7, 2022. We do need to call the election. So is there a motion under item 10?
I make a motion to approve the order of the general election for Ward 2, 4, and Mayor on May 7, 2022.
Sir, sir.
All right, there's a motion of second under item 10. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. We've already taken care of 11. And that takes us to 12, which is to receive financials and the quarterly investment report as of December 31, 2021. Okay.
December represents 25% of our fiscal year. And if you all, let me see if this is... Let me go to the next page. There we go. And as you can see, the revenues for general fund, utility fund, and airport are at or above the 25%, and expenditures are all within range as well for all of the funds. Our net cash in bank is 2 million higher than the same period last year. Operating accounts are up 2,000. Debt service accounts are up 300,000. And grant funds received are 660,000, and capital project accounts decreased 1 million, while pool cash is up 2.1 million.
So that net cash, real quick, before you go any further, Carolyn, is that, when we talk about the 2 million higher, again, is that from some sort of bond money influx or something? Or is that really because tax dollars and sales tax and other things are adding up?
Well, the 2 million, if you'll, let me go back a page. There you go. It's operating accounts are up 2.4, debt accounts are up 300, and capital projects are down 1 million. And then the influx of the grant funds of 660,000 helps drive that back up.
So that's just the net change? That's nothing?
Yes, that's just looking at 2020 was...
The revenue side.
Well, that's, no, that's looking at the cash side. So we had X amount in '20, Y amount in '21, and that's the difference between. And then our general fund net cash flow is 231.7, higher than the previous year. Revenue is up 173,000, and expenditures are down 58,000. The revenue increase is mainly due to sale of assets of 59,300, and AV taxes or ad valorem taxes collected at 163,000 more than the same period last year, while permits and curb and gutter revenues are down 11.1 and 5.5 respectively. The utility fund net cash is up 40,300. Revenues are up 28.5, and expenses are down 11.8. And then our municipal airport cash flows are up 13.9 as compared to the same period in fiscal year 2020. Our sales tax for year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date is, I can't read it... 338,000, which is the highest, if you'll note, that it's been in the last 10 years.
Almost double what it was 2011 or 2010?
2013, I believe. Or 2012. 2012 would be 10 years.
When did Luigi's close?
When?
Yeah.
Oh, is that November?
I think so.
October or November.
Then that's also when Bush's, that's also when Bush's kind of closed.
Yeah, Bush's has been down for at least two months, if not three. I missed my tea.
Yes. I'm just telling you special.
But what we're seeing on sales tax, we're seeing a lot of sales that are like online sales.
No, that's good. I mean, that's great. I just see that December, I know it lags a little, so I was just wondering if it was already in this too, and if we still had an increase, that would, that would have been amazing to know. But we'll see next month.
Well, yeah, next month it's going to be even higher, and that's year-end of quarter, because next month will be for your December month, and so that's the end of quarter. So you get the quarterly payers on top of the regular monthly payers. So each, each month after the end of quarter is usually a little higher. Okay, and then also in your packet is the investment report for fourth quarter. And you will see, can you scroll that for me, please? Okay, well, you see that we have 11 million in the, in the bank. Of that, 52% is in the pools, and 48% is actually in the bank. You'll see our interest and trust revenue is at 59,000, and our change was 1.5 million. And then you can see by each, each type of fund how much each one changed, whether it's operating or your CIP, enterprise funds, et cetera. Are there any questions?
I don't have anybody have anything you want to bring up? Okay, Carolyn, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us back to item four, announcements from the city manager.
Let's talk to you about housing. I had meetings in the last three weeks with the owner of the parks. They are celebrating, getting started with 39, 40 houses on phase two.
Who is that?
Sean, I can't think of his last name, out of that, has a house canyon developing. Pretty high-quality stuff. He's essentially got the same layout as we started this whole thing with. We changed, our phase two does, there's not any significant changes. Have to build an entryway off of A4. But he's, he's ready to, they've gone pretty quick, met with Walker Partners and everybody, his engineers, and I think it's going to move forward pretty quickly. He knows he's behind the curve. He asked me about all the other guys, when I was talking about the other guys. On the north side, we have a new subdivision. It's not official yet, so I can't really name the owners, but it's going to be 120 lots of 109 acres. So they're a little bit larger lots. They'll probably give away curb and gutter, ladder, expand some, create some property and stuff like that as well, and that can bring in, I don't know, channel out. And it's larger lots, part of that, very nice for the shareholders.
What about silver?
They put the way for it in. Since the density fell, you may recall, this property tried to sell a couple of years ago, but the density they were wanting to put in more than we could handle. This density is exactly what we can handle. That said, anything else happens on the north side, we'll be talking about some major issues.
North side?
That way.
Yeah, straight out.
I really can't be any more specific than that without giving away the owners. I don't have that authority yet. George Eggers has some property on that north side that's being developed. I think James, has Doug sold all of the single family, or he sells it faster than he can build it, but I was thinking he may have sold out.
The Lady Grill Club.
Doug Walker took all the single family there from George on that and partnered with it. George came in and permitted 22 townhouses that are on that end. He has 10 of them sold before he had them permitted, and they're being built now. George Eggers is also looking at a small piece on the very south end of town, just as you pass. Always want to call it Davis Subdivision, but that's not what it's called. You live there, Andrew, and I can't think of the name of the subdivision anyway. Just after you pass the entrance to that, there's a trade, a piece of property on the left, and he's going to be going town on there, begin the addition. It's actually, I think, part of it, very end of begin the addition. I think there's some apartments that sit back in there, and it's going to kind of finish that up and make it look a lot better. I can't think of a better guy to do these little odd pieces of property than George Eggers. He, he has a good product, and he finishes well, and he finishes it out well. If you haven't seen the fence on the property on the north end now, that's just a great combination fence. That will go a long ways to improve your inventory. That's all. Altogether, built out, that represents about 450 lots. That's not what you're talking about now, you're talking about first phases of all of them. It gets built out, you're going to have quite a few homes. And they're selling right now. That's all I have, sir. Chamber banquet, thirty-nine. You were going to say that if I didn't.
Marissa, are you in charge?
Myself and Rin, just done a ton of the work. She's our event chair, also the vice president for the chamber board this year. So it's been great helping and had a full committee, and we're really excited. It's going to be a good way to celebrate, kind of after, you know, being not happening for a year. Be a really good, exciting look at what we can plan for the rest of the year.
And the speaker is?
The President and CEO of Knopf Insulation North America, Matthew Carriage.
He ought to have something to talk about.
I bet he doesn't. They ought to get him to sign this agreement before this.
Okay, item five, request comments from mayor and counsel.
I wanted to say thank you to the exchange board for their hard work. And having been on different boards, one of the toughest things you can do is try to figure out how to get 10 people a meeting time. It's very difficult, and the fact that a lot of people on that board have their own businesses and are willing to give up that time, even if at noon, when they could be doing other things, I think it's pretty amazing. So y'all are doing great work, and I appreciate what you're doing, whether it's at noon or 5:00 in the afternoon, or 10 o'clock on a Sunday morning, as the mayor mentioned was a bad time. But anyway, thank you all.
I have a couple of things, one of which you probably, or you may have seen on our website. There was a late rocket test. What night was that? Thursday, 10:15. I didn't even know, I was asleep by 9:00.
I was asleep too.
But by the time I woke up, I went, oh, well, something must have happened last night, because my email box was full, and I had about five text messages. And so I called or texted or sent an email to Kevin and to Angie, because Alma Walser Santos, who is really our liaison with SpaceX, had been updating us with what's going on with SpaceX. And so we published that out on the website, but in general, SpaceX absolutely, as we all know, counsel, they know that they have a problem out there, an issue with the noise. It's the, it's really the, it's the, it's not even the ground vibration, it's the low-frequency wave that causes things to rattle. They realize the problem, they know the problem, and in large part, they had it really tamped down over the last month or so, when they got the second bay up on the vertical test stand. That means they could take most of the pressure, most of the testing, off of the horizontal test stand. That way, that horizontal stand was only being used when it absolutely had to be used, only when necessity, emergency, that sort of thing. Anyway, they experienced some problems, not with the vertical stand itself, but with the, what do they call it? The diverter, the flame diverter. The flame diverter where they muffle the sound, and water goes on top, essentially a sound catcher. And I think they blew out some of the concrete, some of the steel pipe in it, got a little too hot, too much pressure, and, you know, they admitted, say, hey, look, you know, we, sometimes we build faster than, than we can engineer it, because they're just blowing and going always. And so anyway, the new construction of that began February the 11th, so hopefully, and literally, they're working round the clock. Alma sent me the photographs where they had people in that trench at midnight, working round the clock. So they're going to work to get it repaired, and hopefully that noise will dissipate, and then eventually, hopefully, that horizontal stand, at least when it tests Raptor engines, hopefully that would just go away at some point, so we get back to its vertical test stands. And, you know, when we know that they are testing five, six, seven times a day, 40 tests a week, and we hear four or five of them, maybe that goes to we hear one of them. That's the goal, and they know that. So I wanted everybody to be aware of that. That's out on the website. Because part of the issue is, we need to make sure that people are aware, that people need to have notice and knowledge when things go sideways at SpaceX with the noise issue now. We need to make sure, and I think with SpaceX's cooperation, we'll do a better job of informing people, which leads to my next point. So that late rocket test cost them, what, $25,000?
Yes, sir. It's the third one for the year. All of them after 9:00, it'll be 25,000 for the rest of this coming year. And their absolute cutoff on time is 11. It used to be midnight, I remember now, because this is the first one they've had after 10:00 at the moment. What generally drives that, as a general rule, is a tight launch window, which are very common in a federal government contract. Sometimes they just got it. Sometimes they just got to do what they have to. So I think the, I just, I actually just texted Robert Penn and asked him when they're going to have water for sound on that horizontal stand because I don't think that's there yet.
So again, it's awfully early in the year, so whenever you hear that test go off past nine o'clock, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a pop. That's going to add up in a hurry. And so I told Kevin, I'd like to send the next agenda, some conversation, not for action, but just for conversation amongst the council about what we're going to do with that money. It was part of the deal with SpaceX that if they were going to pay that kind of money, which again, it's going to add up in a hurry, and they wanted that money put back into the parks. And we did that previously at Launchpad Park, beautiful place out there. I suggested to Kevin that Beulie Park needs some work.
It needs a lot of work. I mean, you know, we're just talking to people again, just this past week, they're like, are y'all gonna do something about Beulie Park?
Tell them to come to the meeting on Wednesday or next month, in March. We need to discuss Beulie Park. Again, it's going to take some money, but, and Kevin has the idea about the splash pad that's going to take some money. So.
We're ready. We're actually, the splash pad committee is going to be meeting pretty quick. But the, you have a set of dollars that are set aside in one of the old COs for that splash pad. You may have to sweeten that, depends on how your engineering comes out, how your money comes out. And the thing for Beulie Park, we've been told that those tennis courts are not capable of being renovated, but we're going to go to a different set of folks and ask them that question.
But they're just not that big. It'd seem like you couldn't get a front-end loader, a dozer, and just dig out a foot and then start re-basing it.
Well, if you can use what's there at all, it would be better because it's just so much cheaper than going back and putting the base in. But we got to go figure out more what's there. That old lake hold, those are really old courts and those lake old surface courts, they don't do them anymore. And they were kind of cheap when they did them. So we're going to have a tennis court guy, Walker Partners is trying to find one or two, and we're going to get them out here to look at it. Also, your new restrooms for, Amslar Park will be going, going pretty quick. So you'll be following up with new restrooms over the next few years in both Beulie and Casting.
You know, when we talk about our parks, again, we'll spend a lot more time on this next month, but we've made, you know, Amslar Park looks beautiful. I mean, it is gorgeous out there. We made some improvements handful of years ago to Casting Park, really pretty out there. And the, and the ball court's out there too. Launchpad Park, but man, Beulie, that's the only, it's just, it's just bad.
It's one that's kind of been left.
Yeah, we really need to put some focus on that. And so I will just tell you, Kevin, philosophically, I'm going to be inclined to say, let's fix what we got before we go build something new. I mean, if we, if we got something that looks that bad, we either need to scrap it and plant grass or get to fixing it, one or the other, before I think we need to go build something completely new. It's an eyesore and it's completely unusable there. And we don't have tennis courts anymore. I understand the school has closed.
School's closing down, so that, that, we were actually talking about expanding theirs and having a bigger facility there. And they've, they've closed down and they're not interested in light, so we'll just have to go do it on.
Anyway.
And pickleball, whatever that is, has become a big deal.
That's a big deal.
I'll, when we have more time, I'll talk to you about doing the latest thing all the time and how that happens in cities and how you end up changing old tennis courts into inline hockey rinks. But that's not for this conversation.
Yeah, again, but a tennis court can double, I think, as a basketball court and a pickleball court.
It's funny, some of y'all got that email from Mr. Etheridge. Joe Etheridge has an exchange student and he emailed us about that. And I've been emailing him back and forth. I went up and looked at the tennis courts. And he says, I want to, I'd like to learn how to play tennis. And I just went up there and when I saw it, I kind of assumed it was total, it was a disaster and it couldn't be fixed. But when I started looking at it, I was kind of thinking, maybe it can. And maybe it won't last a hundred years, but it, you know. Yeah, so I think it's worth, I think it's worth looking into for sure.
Okay, well, you think Jazz guys can look at that by next meeting and waste?
They're going to find somebody that can, kind of like they found somebody that does splash pads.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I mean, that was, that was one of my questions was, you know, when SpaceX does get fined. I knew before they had said parks, I just wasn't sure if it was one specific park or if it could be all parks that, that money could go to.
Parks are a reservation in general.
Okay.
They just, they, the desire of the council at the time was to put that money somewhere where we can improve parks. We've used it also for the exchange, face out of that. Her challenge was to make her money back in two years and you did it in a year and a half.
During a pandemic.
Yeah, so I think we're going to be okay there. It's not like the exchange is going to make you a lot of money, but it ain't going to cost you to run it. So we'll be able to take that park money back and do more parks.
And then I know SpaceX, you know, they put in those, you know, they're, they're doing it a different way to kind of keep noise down. But one thing that, again, you know, it's election time, so people come with their complaints. But one of them is, there's a big pop now right at the beginning. Is that, is that just how it's going to be with the new one?
Yep.
Okay.
It depends on, a lot of that depends on the wind. That's how they ignite it. And they have to put enough out there to ignite it. But it, it has a puff of gas out there before they blow and they ignite that puff of gas and that ignites the engine.
And.
Like a big gas grill.
You never know if it's going to be a big pop or a little pop. That has to do with wind and weather conditions.
And again, which way they've got that thing tilted. Is it up and down? Is it vertical?
If that's in the ground, you don't hear it much.
Yeah, and, but I've noticed the rumble is a little lower, you know.
It's improved a lot.
Yeah, it's just a, and then it's like a, you know.
Sometimes it's a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. They have flowed water in both bays. It's imminent that they'll run a test. They ran one Saturday with the water on for most of the test. Had to fix an underground leak, done today. So the horizontal stands will now have the water definitely on her.
So we'll see if it matters. And again, they weren't sure, they'll, it's kind of a, again.
They spent a lot of money on something they weren't completely sure about. But that should help.
So I was over at the Waco Rotary, they wanted to know about what was going on in McGregor last week, and it was really kind of funny. So I got up to speak and Alma had given me some slides for SpaceX. And one of the slides, when I got to SpaceX, that horizontal rocket was turned over and, and I mean, just, it was one of those Raptor engines, fire was just blowing out, but the sound wasn't working on my PowerPoint presentation. I said, I said, Doug, I'm at the sound's not working, you can't hear that, can you? And everyone went, some person sitting right next to goes, oh, I don't need to see that. I know exactly what that sounds like. We hear that all the time. And that kind of led right into everybody's questions. That's all they wanted to know about was how loud it was.
And the one last thing, Dollar Tree, do we know when it's opening?
They don't have anything in the store.
Don't know a thing about it. I know the one in Clifton is open. Drove past it this weekend.
Okay, with that, it is eight-thirty and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.